Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
And it's seven o'clock in the nose. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting for Fat Tuesday, February 21st, 2023. Laissez les bons temps rouler, right?
Fancy.
Okay, so I'll start by introducing the members of the board. To my far right, David Mersky, Esther Olson Murphy, Laura Davies, and in her first appearance before the zoning board of adjustment, new member Laura Montagno. Welcome, Laura. So I'm going to start by noticing that the application of 107 Panama Road LLC at number 50 Linden Street, scheduled for this evening's zoning board, that application has been withdrawn at the applicant's request. So if anybody is here for 107 Panama Road, you're free to go celebrate Fat Tuesday without us. If not, stick around. Okay, so we're going to start with this evening, the application of 29 Garfield Street LLC for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.4, for relief from side and rear yard setback and building coverage requirements, and a variance from Article 6, Section 6.19.3.a. dot 5, to exceed the maximum height requirement for the proposed construction of a three-story 36-unit apartment building, parking, and a first-floor ambassador station, providing services for patrons of the abutting train station. The subject property is located at number 29 Garfield Street in the C1 Central Area Commercial Zoning District, tax map parcel number 73-225, and this is ZBA case 22-21. Good evening.
Good evening, sir, zoning board. I'm Henry Boyd with Millennium Engineering of Exeter, and I actually would like to introduce our boss or our client, Mr. Mark Kearns, to come up and talk a little bit about the project, and then introduce the team that he's assembled to present this case to you tonight.
Good evening, board. My name is Mark Kearns. I was born and raised in Beverly, Massachusetts. I went to St. John's Prep in Danvers, and then I went to the University of Notre Dame in South Bend, Indiana. From there, I worked at the Securities and Exchange Commission in Washington, DC, until I was drafted into the US Army. In the Army, I was trained to be a medical corpsman, and I worked in a hospital, US Army Hospital in Belgium. When I got out of active duty, I came back and I married my wife Sandy in 1973. And Sandy and I began dairy farming in southern Maine for the next 10 years. While dairy farming, I went to law school. And in 1981, I graduated from law school and passed the main bar. And I practiced law first from the dairy farm, and then practiced in Sanford, Maine, Wells, Maine, and now I practice out of Portland. Since 1980, my wife and I, along with some different partners, have owned real estate in southern Maine and in southern New Hampshire. And over the years, we've developed it, we've managed it, and we've sold it. Sandy is a psychologist, and she has her own practice in Newport Beach, California. And she and I are dedicated to using our experience over many years to try to develop affordable housing at the train station in Exeter. For many years, I have represented my very good friend Dorothy Milbury, who is a local Realtor and has been a Realtor for 50 years. And she introduced me to Exeter Real Estate, and she was the buyer's broker for when I bought 29 Garfield Street. And she recommended to me, when I first started looking for real estate in Exeter, that I should use Henry Boyd. And over the years, since 1980, I have used many engineers over the years. And I can tell you that I find Henry to be one of the finest engineers I have hired. And I think the town of Exeter is lucky to have him around. And so, so he's the first member of the team. And over the years, I have seen and met Tim Phoenix. I've seen him in action before various boards, and I find him to be very knowledgeable and experienced. And if I have a client in Maine who needs help in municipal law in New Hampshire, I refer them to Tim because I think he does a great job. Next, I have Dennis Myers, the architect. And Dennis is an award-winning New Hampshire architect with his office in Manchester. And he's done many, many, many beautiful buildings. And he, and if you, if you ever have a moment and you want to click on Dennis Myers, the architect, and see the many beautiful buildings that he has designed and have been constructed in New Hampshire, I think you'll be very, very impressed. I have used Dennis since 1986 on projects in Maine, on some very beautiful projects along the coast of Maine, and one especially in Kenny Bunkport. And I've known Ken Wood, who's an engineer, has an office in Elliott, Maine, and Ken has worked with clients of mine who've done wonderful projects in southern Maine, especially the Flynn family, which developed Outlook Golf Club, which is a gateway to South Berwick. He's also worked with him on the Stage House Inn, which is a beautiful renovation project in downtown South Berwick. And Ken has worked on the golf course in Wells and the golf course in York, and has done many residential projects as well.
May I interrupt?
Yes.
And I apologize for this, but there are a lot of people here, and there's a lot of business before the board this evening, and we would like to hear about this project.
Okay, so we, we have a, and I'm going to touch on just one of the variances that we're requesting, and that is the height request. And the height request is solely to have a peaked building, a peaked roof building, and it has dormers. And if you read the standards in the, in the MUND, it requires that new buildings follow the architectural style of New England as well as the town. And we've tried very, very hard to do that. And by developing affordable housing, we believe that the building still should be beautiful, and it should be consistent with the local architecture. And that's what we've done there. We do not want to create boxes for affordable housing. We want it to be a beautiful place for people who want to live there, and it's their home as much as anybody else's home. Now, this project will have 36 units. As you know, under the MUND, four of them will have to be rented at the below-market value stated by the state. So, and that will be done. And the, the project will have, if approved, it will have an array of solar on one of the roofs, of solar panels, and the electricity will be fed into a commercial battery. The batteries will be buried on-site, and then we will purchase the balance of the electricity from the power company at off-peak hours or at a program where we can purchase it as best we can price-wise. And then the building is entirely electric, and we believe future buildings like this will be all-electric because that is the future of the greening of America. And we're going to provide all brand-new appliances, and the appliances will be all the latest green appliances, including induction electric stoves. And the, the, all the parking is beneath the building, and we will provide plug-ins for electric vehicles so that they can plug in their vehicles in the evening and so on to fill them there. And so from, I will let the team do the rest of it. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
So I, I brought copies, large copies, for the zoning board. If you'd like larger copies instead of the 11-by-17s.
Welcome to leave them on the table.
Sure. You can share them, probably. They're large enough to share.
Okay.
So I, I don't think I have the most exciting portion of the project. I think that would be Dennis when he gets up and shows the beautiful building that he's designed. But my job as the surveyor is to show you basically what's there now. This is a very odd lot, kind of a strange location. It runs parallel to and right up against the rail corridor, so the train station is here. Prescott pump is across the railway corridor. Currently, there's a building there, a commercial building, there's a lot of existing truck traffic, up to and including tractor-trailers, which probably isn't really desirable for Garfield Street, which is kind of a narrow and tight neighborhood that's served by mostly residential with the storage business next door. The existing building is 175 feet long, it's about 40 feet wide. The remainder of the property is basically just gravelled, so what you have is rooftop and essentially sealed surface. The building is about this far off of the property line, that being the railway right-of-way. So one of the variances that we're asking for is side setback on that, so we're actually going to be improving that side. Here is the train station parking, which comes right to a gated fence that's here currently, and you can see the self-storage, the storage businesses that are on the adjacent lot. We are right on the Garfield Street curve coincident with that.
May I ask, do you consider the Garfield Street end to be the front?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. So if you look at sheet two, so that was the existing site, this is the proposed site plan, and it shows a fairly large building which will take up most of the lot. And I will let Dennis explain why that is so and what the shape of the building is all about. But we are asking for an improvement to the setback here, but because we have a 10-foot setback, we still are asking for 5.4 feet of relief, where we have 2/10ths of a foot now. We also are asking for relief on the right-hand side of the property to 7 feet, where 10 feet is required, and then in the back, where in the rear, in this case, there usually is a 20-foot setback. So I guess that would be the largest section of relief that we're asking for. The building is quite large, but in this zone, you're allowed up to 75% of the lot to be covered with building. In this case, we do need a very, very small amount of relief, and that's 1.3 percentage points. One of the reasons that we're asking for that relief is because we accommodate all of the parking within the building that Dennis will be able to demonstrate for you on the actual building plans, which is a unique thing that we're not asking for parking relief, which is a great thing, I think. We do need some, we don't need front setback relief because it's actually zero in this zone. We do have, I think, 3.4 feet. There'll be proposed driveway which will come into the building, and then the parking will be accommodated under the building area. So unless you have some other questions for me, I think that probably is it. So I know we have a lot to do tonight.
We do, and I just want to remind you and the team that this is specifically the zoning board, not the planning board. We're not approving the building, per se. We are simply looking at the lot coverage, at the setbacks, and at the height. So if the team could be consistent in addressing those issues, I mean, the structure of the building is nice, but that's not our purview. That has to do with... I do have a question. Have you been to technical review yet?
We have not. I wonder if that will take place for a planning board if we, if we have a meritorious case here.
Correct.
Yep. And Mr. Chairman, I just pointed those things out because that is the relief that we're seeking, so...
Right, thank you.
Yep.
Please. Are there any questions for the gentleman at this point, other members of the board, before they move on? Members of the audience will have an opportunity.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Architects dislike zoning because you don't get to shine in front of us. I'm sorry.
You reminded us of that.
Do your best.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll try and make this easel work rather than set up another one. This is sort of a colored site plan that basically outlines the concept of the building and why we're as wide as we are and why we're as long as we are. The front of the building will be off Garfield Street, as was addressed earlier. We'll have lobby, elevator, and stairs here. You'll drive in, come down, swing, and park on both sides of this double-loaded aisle. So in order to accommodate the parking, we sort of need a minimum building width, which is our 52 feet in this case, and that's about as narrow as we can go for a double-loaded corridor upstairs that gives us our 36 units on two floors of housing.
So the parking is ground floor? You're not going down?
We're not going down. It has a slight slope to it, front to back, but other than that, we're not digging deep because we would have ramp issues and other concerns.
The site has a slope.
The site has a slope.
And which end is higher?
This end up at Garfield Street, there's a pitch down this way, and we'll have drainage in the garage, and our drainage will be handled under the parking, under the building.
Thank you.
The other thing we're, well, this isn't the planning board, so unless you have a question, I'll move on. This is a typical floor plan. It just shows a double-loaded corridor, and our units are very narrow, but it gives us windows in all of our two-bedroom units. We're proposing 36 units, 18 per floor, and one of those on each floor is a one-bedroom, the rest are two-bedroom units. We're showing the building not because we're at the planning board, but because we have this height issue we're asking relief for. So we have, one of the reasons the building is higher is that we're providing parking under the building, yet we only have two floors of residential units. We could meet the ordinance by providing a flat roof at this eve height with no parapet variation and things like that that would then cause our height to increase. But after looking at a few studies, the team agreed that in this location, which we consider sort of a gateway with the rail line to Exeter, a pitched roof, a more traditional appearance, would greatly improve the building's appeal, and therefore, we're asking for relief of the site. The tower is our elevator overrun and stair access to the roof. But we are providing shielded mechanical units on the roof, so there's no mechanical units sitting around the site that impact other setback issues and so on.
And the tower is at the Garfield Street end?
The tower is at the Garfield Street end. It sort of announces our entrance and is the engine of this train that's parallel to the tracks. We're using clavoured shingle combination, and the tower is going to be articulated in brick. We're looking at white colors with black windows and sash, kind of a classic New England But that's the real reason for the height issue, and that's why we're here tonight. Be happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Do you happen to know the height of the existing building?
Not exactly, but I believe it's about 22 to 24 feet.
And where is 22 to 24 feet on yours, just roughly?
Let me tell you exactly. It's about the middle of this window, the second floor window. Slightly lower, maybe, a foot.
There are quite a few trees on the property on both sides, pretty scraggly. I assume everything will come down.
It will. We're providing a sidewalk, sidewalk on the rail track side that connects Garfield Street to the rail parking lot.
For what purpose?
For pedestrians to get from overflow parking and for our tenants to also get to the parking lot at this train station.
I recognize that you're not asking, and forgive me if these questions are coming up at a time that if you'd rather defer to somebody else, please...
Well, our other members of the team can feel free to jump in, but I'll do what I can.
You're not asking for any relief on the parking, but there are, because it's in the MUND, because it's a MUND project, which doesn't require it. But should it not be in that, do you know what your parking requirement would be? Something in the order of 48 to 50 units of spots?
Spaces.
Spaces, yeah.
Yeah, it depends on the clientele. You know, two-bedroom units, a lot of times we're seeing now the second bedroom used as an office.
It actually depends on the zoning, not on the, it's...
Well, our zoning...
One per bedroom plus one visitor spot per each four units.
But in the MUND, it's one per unit.
I understand that. My question was specifically, if it was not in the MUND, there would be, the point is, is that the, the number of automobiles that are likely to, that is possible to be used by this building exceeds the 36 that you're going to be providing on-site. I'm trying to get a gauge on what that number might be.
I'm not sure. Historically, currently, we're seeing as much as one and a half.
Do you know how many bedrooms there is, there are combined in your 36 units?
There are two bedrooms per unit except for two one-bedroom units, so that would be 78.
78 plus guest spaces.
All right, significant. Okay, thank you. Any other questions from members of the board for the...
I do.
The applicant?
Shockingly, I do. How wide is that sidewalk connecting Garfield and the train station?
Five feet.
The MUND indicates you need to have sidewalks that are eight feet wide. Is that, it's not an option? Because it specifically says when you put in sidewalks, they need to be eight-foot-wide sidewalks when associated with the MUND.
We're proposing five foot largely because of the width of the building and the required parking dimensions.
Do you know how wide the one is out front? You have one coming out next to the parking lot. Is that one going to meet that eight-foot requirement?
Where are we on the site?
Next to the parking lot entrance. There's a walkway coming out of the building that connects, it looks like, to the sidewalk or connects to Garfield Street. There's a walkway.
Garfield Street?
There's a walkway coming out of the building that curves around on the Garfield.
Goes into your lobby.
So it's up here?
Yep.
Yeah, this is...
Meet that eight foot?
This can easily be eight foot.
That's all I have for the moment.
When I read the MUND, I thought the eight foot was the street frontage.
Any other questions from members of the board?
So there's no relief required for number of units or any of that, any other use issues, strictly setbacks?
Not that I'm aware of. We may, we may just have Tim sort of summarize the issues and support the legal case.
Oh, I have one other question, actually. Bob mentioned, asked about trees. Are the trees on-site or are they in the rail corridor right of way?
Currently, the ones on the west side are in the rail corridor. And there may be a couple on our east boundary, but they're very... And there may be a couple on our east boundary, but they're very close to the boundary because most of that is truck traffic.
See if I can do this. How does this fit in here? You know how to fit this in here, Henry? Slam it in? There we go. Can you hear me? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tim Phoenix from Hopeful Phoenix, Gormley &amp; Roberts in Portsmouth, on legal counsel to the applicant and a member of the team. You've heard the background of Mark Kearns and the technical and architectural issues. I'm here to go through the variance requirements, but before I do, I just want to mention one other thing that we are proposing, which is, really has to do with the MUND, which is an ambassador station, which is essentially restrooms, and we're going to work with the planning board about other things, possibly getting train tickets, et cetera, to accommodate those utilizing the train. As was mentioned, we don't need any parking variances. We only need the setback and the height variance. Although the MUND is not your purview, I think it's important to consider what the purpose of the MUND is and why the MUND ordinance is and why Mark has proceeded with it. It is outlined in my submission, my narrative, but for the -- I won't read the whole thing, but as I state on page three, pursuant to Exeter's master plan, the town wishes to expand housing diversity in mixed-use districts in order to increase the vibrancy of these districts, stimulate the local economy, and provide access to rental and homeownership options that are not possible in other districts. And that's exactly what Mark is doing here, and because of that purpose, the MUND also, as the chair pointed out, decreases the required parking to one unit, one parking space per unit, which we meet here and provides some other relief. And the idea is, and we think this is a perfect location for it, that this, the existing building, you've got a photograph of it, and you've all probably seen it, it's pretty nondescript, it's part of my Exhibit C, and it's, you know, essentially, a moving company is in there, it's a metal building. Next to it, thank you very much, next to it on the right is the self-storage location, behind it is the train track, and on the other, the far end of it is the train station parking lot. Across the street are where there are homes, and we're looking at this as a transition or part of a new gateway for the train, for people utilizing the train. Hopefully, those are the kind of people that will want to live here. It is only going to be rentals, it's not going to be condominiumized. Mr. Kearns is intending to rent it. As he mentioned, we're going to be providing the required 10%, a little over that, for affordable housing units, which is required under the MUND ordinance and state law for this type of project. On the numbers, just so, I'll restate them. We need Section 4.4 side setback, required is 10. Right now, on the left, we have a few inches, as Henry stated, and we're going to have almost five and a half feet, increasing that relatively substantially. On the right, we now have 23 and a half feet, 23.6 feet, and we're going to, we're proposing seven. And the reason for that, to repeat, as Dennis stated, is that the lot is only, is less than 70 feet wide. And when you, if you're going to have the parking under, you have to have room for the parking spaces, two-way aisle, and parking spaces on both sides of a two-way aisle, and that's what drives the width of the building. And of course, the project also has to be viable. The rear setback is generally 20. It's, that building meets it, and we're looking for 5.2. Building coverage is, allows 75%. It's now less. Our proposal is 76.3% or only 1.3% over the required amount. We think that is negligible. And finally, on the height, permitted is 35 feet. In other MUND areas, up to 50 feet is permitted. We're asking for 46.58 feet. And as mentioned, the drivers of the height variance are the parking beneath, so you need a story, if you will, for the parking, and then the pitched roof that Dennis thought, we all thought, was more in keeping with what Exeter is looking for in terms of design. I also included in here the tower, which is 57.08 feet. I don't believe it's required, but just in case, I included it. And the reason it's not required is because the ordinance defines building height under Section 2.2.15 as the vertical distance measured from the main level of the ground surrounding the property to the highest point of the building, but not including chimneys, spires, towers, silos, tanks, and other projections. So we've put it in here, but we urge you to agree with us that that requirement for that small, small tower area is not required. Turning to the variance requirements, there are five of them, as you well know. I always include the first two together, which is that the variances are not contrary to the public interest, and the spirit of the ordinance is observed, and the seminal case, plus its progeny, is the Malachi-Glen Associates case that I've cited. And the overarching issue is, will the variances unduly and to a marked degree conflict with the ordinance such that they violate the ordinance's basic zoning objectives? And as I lay out in my memorandum, the first thing I always do under that requirement is look at what the, at the purposes of the zoning ordinance, which are also outlined on my, in my memorandum, and they include lessening congestion in the streets. Right now, we will have cars parking there, but right now, we have large trucks going in and out of there, including tractor-trailers, and it's my understanding that many of them have to back in, one way, either back in or back out, and of course, a commercial truck has the beepers and what have you. So we think that changing that building and the use of that building with the truck traffic to an apartment building with covered parking underneath does help to lessen overall congestion in the streets. We want to secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers. The building will be fully sprinkled, so it will be safe, promote health and the general welfare. Again, we're providing the ambassador station, which helps the general public. We're providing a walking path for the public to use from Garfield Street to the train parking lot. We think that the residential use, which will include the affordable housing, will promote health and general welfare, promote adequate light and air. We only very slightly exceed the coverage requirement. The height is an issue. We've given you the reasons, but there are many tall trees around there. They look in the photographs that I've included as exhibit C, most of those trees look like they're on the abutting properties, because most of our property on this side is used for the driveway out to the back, and on the other side is, I believe, it's only inches from the property line. So those trees are mostly on the abutting sites. I asked when Dennis was talking, I asked Henry, and he said there's really very few trees on this site, if I'm correct. So we think that adequate light and air is provided, granted, we're asking for the height variance, but we think that the nature of the uses around us, which include the storage facility, which we believe will be fine, the parking lot and the railway, they're not affected by this, and we are far enough away from any homes that the height of the building is going to be problematic for light and air. We want to prevent the overcrowding of land. Again, we're following this under the MUND, which is permitted. We want to avoid the undue concentration of population. The MUND is calling for this kind of development and, if you will, beautification of the area around the train station, and facilitate adequate provision of transportation, solid waste, water, sewage, school, and recreation facilities, which we believe this does. The Malachi-Glen case that I cite boils down to, the Supreme Court boiled it down to two things. Do granting the variances alter the essential character of the locality in a negative way, or do they threaten the public health, safety, or welfare? And I've described the locality as somewhat eclectic. Most of Garfield Street is residential, but this particular area is commercial slash industrial next to a train station and a train station parking lot. So we believe that the proposed building and its aesthetics does help the essential character of the locality and does not harm it. For the same reasons, the variances we're requesting do not threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. The third of the five tests is that substantial justice will be done by granting the variances, and the test is, if there's no benefit to the public that would outweigh the hardship to the applicant, this factor is satisfied. So since we are, we have a very narrow lot, a width of a building that is really required for the parking underneath it, for accessways and parking spaces, and of course, to make it financially viable, the length of the building drives the number of units, and that length also drives how much we need to get the number of parking spaces under the building. Like I said, we're calling this a new gateway, as envisioned by the MUND statute. It's really an architecturally favored pitched roof, harms no one, given its location. We're providing the underground parking. We're very close to the 75% limit, so the public, we believe, is not in any way harmed if these variances are granted due to the location of the building and its existing use when you apply the MUND statute ordinance that we have to go back to the, go to the planning board for. But Mr. Kearns will be harmed if the variances are denied because he can't build the project that he wants in the way that he wants to provide the benefits of 36 market value, 34 market, 32 market value apartments with four affordable units. And then finally, number four is that the surrounding property values are not diminished by granting the variance for the reasons I've stated, going from what you see there today to what has been proposed and has been shown to you on Henry's plans and on Dennis's architecturals, we think it's going to beautify this area, be much, much more in keeping with what the town wants to see, and therefore, it's not going to diminish surrounding property values. And finally, the hardship test, there's three prongs of that. Special conditions distinguish the property from others. It's very narrow. As we've mentioned, it's essentially all impervious surface today. It's surrounded by commercial slash industrial and transportation uses other than, if you will, across the street, across Garfield Street where, and down Garfield Street where there are homes, and we believe the building, the property's location, its width, its depth, all create special conditions under the hardship test. The second prong is that there's no fair and substantial relationship between the public purposes of the ordinance and its application in this instance. So then we look at, why do we have these requirements? Side and rear setback requirements are intended to promote ample air and light, stormwater treatment, distance between neighbors, sightlines, and the like. It's been explained that stormwater is going to be treated on-site through, I believe, through the parking area floor, so there's no, there's no issue there. The side variance on the left side of the building, as you're facing it, is improving the distance from that building. It's also abutting a rail line. On the right side, we are getting closer. As I've mentioned, we have to because we need that width for the, for the drive aisle and parking spaces. So because there's a storage facility next to it, we see no harm to anyone from those variances. Let me just check something. Again, I've mentioned that building coverage limits are some of the same reasons to provide area for stormwater treatment, you know, air-light separation, but we're just a very slight amount over that, so we think it's negligible. And finally, the height, which is probably the most significant variance we're asking for, is driven by the need, the underground parking, which is 10 to 12 feet, and the pitched roof, which we think is much more aesthetically pleasing than what's there today, and given the location and its surroundings, we think it will fit in well and will not look like it's overbulking. So when you balance the public and private benefits and interests of this project to provide vibrancy, stimulate the economy, and increase rental options and affordability, we think this project makes sense and is entitled to the variances we've requested in order to permit us to go to the planning board. That's all I have, unless you have questions, and then any of us will answer the questions as needed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation. I'll start with the first question, if I may. In order for this to be considered a MUND, there must be a mixed use. And you're considering, obviously, the ambassador station to be the mixed use.
Correct.
Approximately, how many square feet out of the entire property, or what percentage of the entire property is, does that represent?
I would have to defer to Dennis, and are you asking about footprint or total square footage of the?
Square footage.
Okay.
Not cubic, square ground. I mean--
Ambassador station is about 1,000 square feet.
Out in the entire building is how many square feet, including three floors? Calculator?
Nice. Well, Henry, you've pronounced, right?
It's about square feet of different space. It's about 15,000 per floor.
15,000 per floor. So 45,000 square foot building, 1,000 square feet is dedicated to the mixed use.
Lower floor, you know, it's not a lot.
That's correct. But the entire structure, this 15,000 per floor, roughly, so.
So, Mr. Pryor, we did, it's a fair question. We did, we believe that's a planning board issue, but--
Understood.
I get the question. We looked at this, we met with the staff and discussed the viability of this kind of an option. They seemed to think it was worth pursuing with the planning board, and for a couple of reasons, typical commercial or retail just doesn't make any sense here. You know, a store, for instance, you have to be really going to that place for another purpose in order to go to the store, or it's going to increase, you know, traffic even more. It's just not a destination for offices or retail. That's how we felt. So we did, as I said, explored it with the staff. They obviously can't make the decision, but they felt, if I may paraphrase for them, they thought it was worth, you know, proceeding in this fashion.
You understand, of course, why I'm asking the question, which is that there are tremendous benefits to the applicant in having this be considered a MUND.
We agree with that.
Right. Okay. Because as I articulated earlier or hinted at, the parking alone is significant, but the parking is there for a reason. Our parking guidelines are there for a reason, and they are based on the typical usage that one would expect from a one or a two-bedroom or studio apartment, whatever it might be. And that usage far exceeds the 36 units that are provided on-site. Is there any way of, the last thing we need is to have additional parking in the train station lot taken up by the residents of the building? Because the park, now that we seem to be coming back as far as the train service is concerned, it used to be significant, there used to be a significant issue. I was a train commuter for 15 years, and it was very, very difficult finding parking there. I would, I would expect that the train service is now coming back in terms of the number of riders. Is there any way of guaranteeing that the residents in that, in this structure do not utilize existing parking either on Garfield Street or in this? Because I think it quite clearly indicates that our zoning indicates that the 36 units are going to take more than 36 parks.
I would not argue that point with you. As Dennis mentioned, more and more people are having one bedroom and an office. We don't know what's going to happen in that vein, but our interpretation and the meaning and intention of the MUND statute is, for whatever reason, the town saw a fit to pass this ordinance, which we comply with. It will mean that people have to park somewhere else. There is this lot, which I've been told, I've never been on the train there, but I've certainly been told by others that before COVID, it was, it was pretty full. Since COVID, it has not been nearly as full, and, you know, we would be expected that it would come back. I suppose there's conditions we could enter with the planning board that would prohibit parking or, I don't know, residential stickers or something. There's also the, there is some parking over by the feed and grain store that people utilize. I don't know the use of that. I've been in that store many times, never had a problem parking, but I don't know on a daily basis. There's other parking, you know, over on Lincoln Street and what have you, but I think, I interpret the intention of this MUND is that they want people finding a place to park, mostly leave their car and walk. We also think there's some trade-offs that, at least during the week, most of the residents are likely to be out, and their cars are going to be out, so so-called shared parking concept weekends, you know, may be different because people aren't working and are at home. So we know that's a challenge in town in general, but we felt that we were following the requirements of the MUND, and I think that's going to come up at the planning board as well.
Sure.
But we felt that's a planning board issue.
Are there any other questions? Thank you. Are there any other questions for the applicant from members of the board?
No, thanks.
Well, I'm right here if you have-- Well, I'm right here if you have to, Davis.
I just wanted to clarify if the units, if the intention is for all of the units to be rental units or is it going to be ownership?
There are, Mark intends them to be rentals, period. He is not going to be converting them to condos.
Okay.
Right?
Right. And they're all designed to be affordable.
That language, you need to speak at the microphone.
Just so it's part of the record. Thank you.
Just, I would just want to clarify before he does, he might not understand, affordable has a certain meaning in New Hampshire. So he means market affordable and the four units will be affordable, affordable.
Affordable has a very definite legal meaning that you don't want to-
Go there.
Your counsel has just advised you not to. Much as I'd like to put you on the spot for that one.
We are trying, we are trying to make all the units to be as reasonably priced as we possibly can. We have absolutely no intention of selling these as condos. We're not in that business, and this project is 100% being developed as rental housing. I don't know if we can use workforce. Can I use workforce, Tim? Anyway, that's the concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, some people interchange workforce and affordable, and I don't even think that's accurate, so.
Right.
We're clear. Affordable.
Do you know what affordable is right now in Rockingham County?
I don't know what the number, I can tell you what the-
Or what market value is?
I do not know. Others here might, but there's a, there's a definition, I think it's in my, it's like 60%.
It is 60.
Yeah, it's based off of median income.
Median south in the county or something along those lines. I can't find it right now, but it is. Oh, here we go. Rented to a household with an income not more than 60% of the HUD median area income for a family of three, as most recently reported by New Hampshire Housing. That's zoning ordinance section 16, 6.19B3.
Thank you. If there are no further questions from members of the board, we'll open this up to the public and you'll, of course, your team will have an opportunity to come back and address any issues that are raised. As far as the public is concerned, please step to the microphone, one person at a time, and please give us your name and your connection to the property. Have at it.
Thank you. My name is Anne Sonic.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to-
I'll spare you my resume, but I will tell you, I'm a resident of Union Street where-
That's S A N O K.
S A N O K.
Thank you.
Where I've lived with my husband and children for 23 years. Our house was built in 1872. Many of our neighbors' homes are quite old, too. Our children walked to Main Street School, which, if you're familiar with the area, is right at the end of Garfield Street, I mean Lincoln Street School, and then Main Street School's through the woods there. Union Street runs straight into Garfield Street, it's just a block away from the proposed development. This is a relatively dense neighborhood. If you haven't been through there, single family and two-family homes. You know, there's some three-unit and four-unit, but primarily duplexes if they're multis. But the area really does reflect a lot of Exeter's rich history, even for the casual observers. Most of the homes, like I said, were built in the late 1000s, and it does typify the essential New England architectural forms, colonial, Victorian, Gothic, and whatnot, and lining the streets, which were laid centuries ago. I do oppose this petition. Do I like what's there now? No, I don't. But this is not a significant improvement. I think we can do a lot better when it comes to growth and changes. And most importantly, this fails to satisfy the variance requirements legally, and it's really wholly inconsistent with Exeter's master plan and inconsistent also with the goals of the Lincoln Street Project, Improvement Project, which envisioned specifically village-scale improvements. The proposal doesn't meet any of those goals, and I think it doesn't remotely satisfy the variance criteria. I mean, maybe if it was half the height and half the size, maybe. But what I would like to do is address the specific variance issues that the attorney mentioned, specifically relating to public interest. It's asserted by the applicant that this will decrease congestion. As the applicant points out, the project must be consistent with Article 1, Section 1.2, and lessen congestion. Adding 36-plus cars, because let's be honest, there's, there's not going to be a one person in there with an office in one car. There's going to be a minimum of two cars. You add a teenager, an adult child in there, we're at three. So we're really talking 70-plus cars. And then you'll have a walkway which will stop right in front so people can walk to Agway, no, no sidewalk there, and encourage even more cars. It's really hardly limiting congestion. This project is shoehorned into a very, very narrow lot on a sharp corner in a dense neighborhood. From the perspective of form and density, it's kind of honestly a disaster. And I'd like to really draw your attention to Exeter's master plan, which specifically addresses this in terms of the congestion. The master plan specifically, specific goal is to enhance walking and biking, infrastructure between these primary destinations, such as downtown and the Lincoln Street area, as well as Epping Road. The goal, really, the master plan, was to reduce congestion. The town's goal was to actively design and develop solutions that correct unsafe and problem intersections and improve the overall experience and convenience of pedestrians. I don't see how adding 70 cars will lessen congestion. The next point the applicant makes is that this project secure safety from fire, panic, and other dangers, and that specifically promotes the health and general welfare. Really, all it has in the presentation regarding this is that the building will have sprinklers. Well, I mean, every building has sprinklers. There was this building, and with the setbacks that are being requested, it's ridiculously close to the railroad tracks. It's really too close for a person to be traversing safely, let alone having over 100 residents possibly living next to it. Putting housing that close to a railroad track in the 21st century, in my opinion, it's irresponsible and arguably unconscionable. We say we want to bring more people in and have more housing, so this is our solution. Let's squeeze them into this little lot, surrounded by asphalt, next to a diesel roaring train. And I don't consider that to be promoting the health and welfare of citizens. The next point that they address is that this proposal promotes adequate light and air. Again, next to a loud diesel roaring train adjacent to a parking lot, not a speck of green space overlooking a manufacturing and commercial plant on the opposite side of the track, is hardly promoting light and air. Next, the applicant suggests that this proposal prevents overcrowding of land. I really find it hard to give this argument any credence since the variance is actually premised on doing just that. It wants to increase the lot size, doubling the size of the building and specifically exceeding the permissible dimensions in the C2 range. The second, the other point there the applicant makes is that this will not cause an undue concentration of population. But three people per unit in that small crowded space is definitely an unreasonable concentration of population. Since the applicant seeks to conform more closely with the adjacent R2 residential district through its design, which is okay, I get what they're saying, but I feel that the density, they should try to adhere more to R2's density and dimensional regulations, which are significantly different and less. Instead, this applicant is seeking to go beyond even what Exeter's commercial district would normally allow. Next, in the applicant's argument, they state that this proposal will facilitate transportation, school, and recreational facilities. Well, there's no green space, so it's not clear how the project's facilitating recreation. And the project does the opposite of facilitating transportation. It actually complicates and increases this tremendously. There wasn't mention about the Bridge Brothers trucks. Actually, Bridge Brothers, I'll give them this, they only use the Agway in and out. I've been there 23 years, never once seen a Bridge Brothers truck coming from Lincoln Street or Union Street or School Street. Maybe there were a lot of meetings about that 20 years ago, and that's why, but they don't. They never come. I'm sure it's not a happy situation for the people in Agway. And if you've been to the Agway situation, that's kind of a bizarre little setup there. In fact, we had driven down it today, and there was a huge tractor trailer backing in to unload its feed, blocking, you couldn't even go. We had to turn around. So that would probably be the primary entrance and exit for this place. And there certainly, it would be really unfair to say that people who live at this residence should be parking there as overkill. Like I said, the project is the opposite of facilitating transportation. The exit onto Garfield Street is very tricky, a sharp corner. It's right next to a preschool, and it's right close to Lincoln Street, and kids walk down that street all the time in the morning. There's currently actually very, very little traffic on these neighboring streets. You can walk down the middle of the street easily at any time of day and not run into a car. Kids ride their bikes in the street, they play in the street, they skateboard, and they do this because there's minimal traffic. The final point that the applicant asserts is that substantial justice will be done by granting the variance. I mean, that's kind of a broad declaration. Substantial justice for who? For some investor? Certainly not substantial justice for the people who live in that neighborhood, and certainly not for the people who spent years working on Exeter's master plan and Lincoln Street Improvement Project. And if you go to the Lincoln Street Improvement Plan, which, Lincoln Street's right there, so I consider that, you know, very tied to this, one of the, couple of the specific goals outlined in that was, one, protection enhancement of neighborhood identity. And, you know, if you could have something there, it's just too crowded. I mean, it would be nice if that entire section from the end of the residential to where all that storage is, including Bridge Brothers, yeah, if that was two houses or three houses or a small little complex, that would be nice. But anything else doesn't really enhance the neighborhood identity. And also, the part of the Lincoln Street Improvement Project was to protect and enhance pedestrian safety. I feel this does the opposite. And also, one of the specified goals was improvement to traffic circulation, and I think that truly fails on that situation. The out-of-state applicant contends that taking down the structure will be an improvement. If they stopped there, I'd agree. I think everyone would be. It's, it's really unsightly aesthetically. But this new building will exist, just as the other one did before it, surrounded by the same rather dismal aesthetic conditions, a loud diesel train, a parking lot, and a cluster of storage buildings. So, well, aesthetically, the building itself, I think it's nice. It's too tall. It's too tall, it's not consistent with, with the residential neighborhood, but the, the look isn't horrible. But the variances do stretch the limits here in all these factors. Every single point through the, is not met in the variance. It's not met by the master plan. It's not met by Lincoln Street Improvement Project. So I would respectfully request that the variance be denied. I mean, I think we can do better. The proposal doesn't meet Exeter's standards. It impairs the quality of living for the abutters, the surrounding neighbors, and I think the town as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just for clarification, I'm sorry, you said you're on Union?
Yes.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, I'm Mary Teagle. I also live on Union.
How do you spell your last name?
T E G E L.
Thank you.
And I agree with everything that Anne said. And I want to point out a couple of things that may not be in your bailiwick, but I think what people don't say, our team here, is leaves a lot to the imagination. So here's one thing that is out of your purview, and they don't long having to say it. There is a lot of industrial, quasi-industrial use in that general neighborhood, along the tracks, a lot to the west. And I wonder, and then there's the storage shed immediately to the east. I wonder what the implied or explicit precedents are for granting such a dense, tall building with minimal setback, especially since it seems to be inconsistent with the town's goal for how that part of town should develop. So I worry about the precedent. Speaking of precedent, we all know railroads have a lot of junk in the soil, up and down. And I am concerned, and I know there's a technical process, someone mentioned it, but I would, as a citizen, expect that an independent third party do some serious soil sampling before any excavation begins.
That's out of the purview of this board.
Okay, but I bring it up-
Keep your powder dry for the planning board.
Because, I know, there's, there's been some mention that it's very similar to the, I think it's the shoe factory across Front Street. This is the only, this is going to require a lot of excavation. In fact, the impact of the construction is going to exceed their footprint if they're going to try to move equipment around it. Finally, I'm concerned about the harm it does to our neighborhood. And I know it is in your purview to consider the harm that would be caused to the applicant, but it just seems like it's justice that if the law requires that you consider any financial harm, we should not bear the cost of that financial harm if it's going to degrade our neighborhood, and it will.
How so? Please?
Excuse me?
How, how do you envision it?
Well, I am concerned about contamination of the soil, air, and water, airborne during construction, and however long it takes water to run downhill. You don't treat stormwater on site. I didn't hear any mention of-
The, the plan is to treat the stormwater on site. They're going to have some system underneath the building.
Okay, well, that's great. We shall be doing that. The increased traffic, yeah, the increased traffic, and I'm not like, oh, I hate cars. We have a safe neighborhood. We're dealing with what happens on the outskirts of our neighborhood. We're overwhelmed by what's happening on Front Street now, and Lincoln Street has its problems. This is only going to add to that. And no one has brought it up. I think it degrades our property values. I think this is a long-settled neighborhood, and it's an asset, it's kind of an island. And I think it's worthy of preservation, not because we're all, you know, lucky liberal white people who can afford it. I think it's important, the scale. So that will be a harm. And our harm, our loss, is just as important as the investment that these gentlemen have put into their project to date and that they anticipate. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Sir?
Good evening. I'd just like to say that I agree.
You are?
My name is Bruce Kelly.
Bruce?
Kelly, K E L L E Y.
And you live?
I live at 15 Garfield Street with my wife.
Okay, which, where are you in relation to this?
I'm about three buildings down on the same side of the road from this proposal.
Okay.
I agree with the young ladies who went before me as far as all of their thoughts. This is absolutely going to ruin my property value. They're like you, everybody has talked about, there's going to be 70-plus cars. You can't clog up the train station parking lot, so they're going to be all over the street, in front of my house, in front of all my neighbors' houses, down Union Street, School Street, out by the Agway, the Blue Steel or Agway, whatever. They're going to clog up that parking lot because it's available and there are spaces there. It's, that presents line-of-sight dangers for all those children, because there are a lot of children in that neighborhood, and they do ride their bikes on the road. That's the charm of it. And all of those cars are now going to block line-of-sight for all of those kids, which means we can't use our neighborhood the way we've always used it and enjoyed it. I'm not concerned about the applicant's pain and suffering. They're professionals, they do this all the time. They spend a lot of money, they have a lot of money to spend. They're trying to shoehorn a giant building into a small lot to maximize their income, not because it's going to enhance anything except their income. I'm not concerned about anything. The variances are, have to meet criteria, and I, they're listed in the paperwork that's on that thing on the screen on a different page, and I'd say that they fail to meet at least three or four of those five items. I don't recall them from memory.
We do.
Yeah, I'm sure, because it's your job. No, I just, I don't think that this- Yeah, I'm sure, because it's your job. No, I just, I don't think that this is, it's out of scope. It's out of scale to the property. And it doesn't bring anything good. It brings a lot of people, a lot of traffic, and not much else. That's about all I have to say. I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Serena Prevee. I live at 14 Garfield Street. With relation to where the project is, I am-
Serena?
Yes.
And last name?
Prevee, P-R-E-V-E.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
14 Garfield, got it.
Yeah, and with relation to where the project is, or the proposed project is, I am across the street from Nancy and Bruce. I can see Bridge Brothers' current building. Very familiar with their traffic pattern, which is not to say it's a lot of commercial traffic. That's extremely over-exaggerated. All right, so I'm just going to kind of run down some of the things that have already been said. I might repeat a few things, but I'll be quick. So with part of the zoning ordinances, one of the things are to lessen the congestion in the street. And I don't think this is at all achievable with this new building. According to a 2020 study done by the U.S. Department of Transportation, there's been a significant increase in multi-vehicle households. And according to the most recent U.S. Census, over 40% of people within New Hampshire, and that the number actually pretty nearly directly correlates to Exeter, have at least a second vehicle. This equates to a minimum of 15 parking spaces that are not accounted for with this design.
Pardon me, you're addressing us, not him, not the applicant.
Sorry.
Sorry. You don't have to keep looking at them.
I feel like I'm talking to them.
It's us you're talking to.
All right, without, all right, so that equates to a minimum of 15 spaces that are not accounted for with this current design. Without space specifically allocated for the overflow at the 29 Garfield Street property, there will undoubtedly increase the street congestion on both Garfield Street and Front Street. Garfield Street really does not have an overflow parking space, and as far as when visitors are visiting, they're parking in the street. Additionally, Front Street is usually full most, most of the week with people using the train and people going to work in the area. For a neighborhood that is already prone to congestion, I don't understand why we would encourage exacerbating it. Not to forget, there is a winter parking ban that further reduces the parking availability throughout the winter months. And when we combine the requests for, or when we combine the overcrowding from additional parking that will be needed with the dark and/or weather, accidents are going to happen. Furthermore, this is a neighborhood where children walk to and from school, to and from the playground, where children bike, skateboard, scooter with their friends, and people in the neighborhood are often walking. So for an area that is already prone to congestion, just, again, I don't understand why we would exacerbate it. And then with regard to protecting the overcrowding of land, from the beginning, this project desires to overcrowd the land, and that's why these variances are being sought. The project does not slightly exceed the limits as these gentlemen wrote in their, their stuff. Their variance seeks a setback reduction. If we're looking at what the current setback requirements are to what they want to do, the setback reduction, reduction is nearly 50% on the left. They're asking for nearly 30% on the right, and 75% on the back. Regarding the height, they are asking to increase it by 30%, 33%. So 30%, 33%, 50%, and 75%. None of these percentages are slight. And the rest was going to be addressed to them, so I will stop.
Probably prudent. Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Tim Gwynn. I live at 16 School Street.
How do you spell your last name?
G-W-Y-N-N-E. I'm diagonal from Serena.
I ask these questions because the person who does the minutes of the meeting has to get your name right.
I got you.
And if we don't know how to spell it, they're not going to know how to spell it. And you live where?
16 School Street.
16 School. Thank you very much, Mr. Gwynn. Please go ahead.
Yep. I honestly don't have too much more to add than what my neighbors have already said. I agree with everything they've said, and I appreciate them coming. The main thing I'm going to say is, if that tower is put where they're proposing it to be, I'm going to look out my back door and see a giant tower. And I really don't want that. It doesn't make sense for this neighborhood. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Next.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Michelle Wasserman. I'm actually an abutter. I live at 29 Garfield Street.
Wasserman?
Wasserman, W-A-S-S-E-R-M-A-N. My husband, oh.
Okay, and what, and your address, Michelle?
28 Garfield Street.
Thank you. Why are we laughing?
Not 29. Don't live at 29. No. I live at 28 Garfield Street. So-
Okay.
Where the image-
On the corner?
So exactly where the image, looking at the Bridges Brothers moving, that's from our driveway. So it's directly across the street from-
Got it.
From this property.
Yep.
So like, that's exactly taken from our driveway.
Okay.
I really, never been to a meeting like this, don't have much pre-prepared, but I just wanted to add my voice to the dissenting kind of opinions. I oppose this petition. I'm concerned about the harm that it'll do to our neighborhood. I don't think it reduces congestion at all. I think it will increase traffic. I do think it will diminish property values. I think the lack of parking will result in congestion and cars all over the street. I think the requested variances to height and width don't allow for any green space. And I'm certainly not opposed to improving the aesthetics of the neighborhood, but I think the proposed property is far too large for the space. And I would also add that the moving company are very respectful neighbors. The traffic is unnoticedable to us. They don't drive by our street. So I don't think this project will decrease congestion at all. So respectfully request that the variance be denied.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good job.
Hi, my name's Lynn Wallace, W-A-L-L-A-C-E. I agree totally with everyone who has spoken. I have lived on Union Street for 38 years, and I'm distressed by the amount of development that I have seen since I've lived here. And this type of a development, I happen to know Bridges Brothers owner, or former owner, and they made a big effort to never have their trucks come down our street, ever. In fact, I've never seen one. Our street is a very, very quiet street. My daughters grew up there. My granddaughters are out and young, and they ride bikes and scooters. And it is just not going to be an asset to our home values or the neighborhood in general. And what Ann had mapped out strategically and did a beautiful job, every single one of those points that she made, I totally agree with. They, the town itself had the master plan that really enhanced the Lincoln Street look, and it has really helped make the neighborhood more desirable. And this is not going to do that for us. And the fact that there are only four units that are for people that need that kind of help and compensation, that's not enough. And especially the fact that there's probably going to be like 70 cars, when there are plenty of cars, especially during the summer months, that try to park right in front of my house so that I can't even park there. You know, and my kids, when they come to visit, they have no place to park. And during COVID, if it wasn't for the parking space that is right across from the feed and grain store, when there were so many people coming from elsewhere to stay with family, which all of my kids came and stayed in my house, there just wasn't enough parking, because you're not allowed to park on the street in the winter. So they had to park their car over on the feed and grains, you know, lot, because that's one of the closest lots for us to use. So for all those reasons, I would really strongly recommend, and the longevity of my, being a resident here and paying the taxes that we pay, I don't really think it's a fair thing to propose such a large development where Bridges Brothers was, you know, grandfathered in, or they've been there for as long as I have lived there, probably a lot longer. So thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Don't be shy. Everyone else from Union Street did this, so? Greg Pollard, P-O-L-L-A-R-D. You guys are catching on. Good job. Address?
A Union Street.
Thank you, sir.
So I am certainly not as articulate as all my neighbors, but I wholeheartedly agree with everything that they've stated already. And really, the only, a couple of things that, that come to mind as this proposal has been put before the board are really some of the fallacies that are sort of built into their assumptions. So I see 36 parking spaces, one per unit. Two of those are ADA compliant. So are we assuming that they're automatically going to have people that need those spots? I don't know. They don't know that either. They also talk about the tower as being something that is included in zoning variances, I guess, but the tower is actually going to be a used part of the building. It's going to be an elevator. It's going to be stairs. It's going to be an entrance to the building. It's not an empty tower. It's not a silo, as they like to explain. So, as I said, I wholeheartedly agree with all of my neighbors in respectfully requesting that you deny this variance. It will impact us immediately and directly, construction through completion. The, the extenuating circumstances on this and the, the, really the gross malpractice of what they put before the board is really shameful, to be honest. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sir, please.
All right, we're a couple weeks out of surgery here.
All right, I get you.
I'd also like to ask first, if I'm not an immediate neighbor, may I speak?
Of course. Your name?
David Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R.
And where do you live, Mr. Taylor?
117 Court Street.
117 Court?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Please go ahead.
I really just want to bring the perspective of a non-neighbour on what this project would do from somebody just further out in town. The, the number of cars has been brought up, which increase in traffic outside. One of the things they bring up in their proposal quite often is, we hope to rent to train users. They're expecting maybe a, whatever percentage of the residents of this proposed building will leave the building, walk to the train station, go to work in Boston or whatever, walk back from the train station, back to the apartment, never taking their cars through town, especially the bottleneck that is the bridge going through Water Street onto High Street. I would see that. Because I, obviously, I go to the hospital a lot from Court Street, so I have to take that route and have to wait for the traffic to go by. I worry about what this would do to the traffic. The other thing that strikes me, as I read the proposal and as I've heard the discussions this evening, is their reliance on the mund. And the, as was pointed out earlier, is it really a mixed use? If you put a couple of bathrooms in a building with a door to face the train station parking lot, does that make that development a mixed-use development? I'm not sure about that. And I'm not sure, it's also, had been brought up in the, some of the comments on social media, who will be maintaining that ambassador suite, whatever they're calling it. So these are just some of my concerns. I just wanted to raise them from the perspective of a non-neighbour. I really respect everybody that's come up to the podium tonight to discuss from their point of view. They all have really great points. They agree with a lot of them, and saved me from a lot of the thoughts that I would have to articulate, as they've already been articulated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak? You don't get your turn. Anybody else in the public? Hearing none? Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank everyone for their, your attention tonight and your patience. Thank the neighbors for their patience and the respectful way that they've presented their opposition to this. We don't always see that. Frankly, speaking for myself, I, I am mildly, if not greater surprised, at the level of opposition to this. We felt that what we've proposed compared to what's there is a vast improvement, as I've, as I've mentioned. We think that legally, the parking issue, since we comply, that's a planning board issue, not before you. That said, since the neighborhood and the neighbors who have spoken had some relatively consistent comments, we think we need to take a look at that. So my client has authorized me to withdraw our project for now. It may come back exactly as it is, but we think that this board and the neighbors and we, taking a little more time to look at some of their concerns, taking a deeper dive on this, could result in some changes that might help with the neighbors' concerns and might help with any concerns that you may have, and by extension, the planning board. So we, we won't, we will start over from scratch. I'm not asking to continue.
So you're withdrawing the application to this point?
Yes, sir.
Not asking for continuing?
Correct.
Do we need to take a vote on a withdrawal? We do. Okay. All set, Mr. Phoenix?
I am.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I would like a motion.
Yes, I would like a motion.
Okay. I move that we accept the applicant's request to withdraw without, well, request to withdraw at this point.
Let's just leave it at that, yes. Second?
Second.
Is that without prejudice?
That's where she was going, yeah.
Yeah, so we, obviously, we, it has to be without prejudice because we need to bring something in for, before you begin.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to allow the withdrawal of this application, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Five zero. Thank you. You're all set.
Thank you, and apologies for the time we took. We thought it was worthwhile at the time, and appreciate your time and that of the neighbors.
I'd just like to take a moment and echo the comments of Mr. Phoenix and say thank you to everyone who spoke for the respectful way in which you spoke, because we do not always hear that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If we could take the conversations outside, we have other business, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience, all. The application of Janine L. Richards for special exception for Article IV, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses, and Article V, Section 5.2, to permit the conversion of the existing single-family home and accessory structures, detached barn and garage located at 14 Hobart Street-
That's why I get a phone.
Oh.
Into four residential condominium units. The subject property is located in the R2 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel Number 74-88. This is ZBA Case Number 23-4. Good evening, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. Chairman Pryor and members of the board, I'll let the, the groundswell of activity outside settle down for a moment.
The celebration.
I don't know, I don't know about that, but there's, there's some chatter out there. There's some chatter out there. So let me, I'll, I'll wait until it settles down for a moment. So, my name is Sharon Summers. I'm with Donahue, Tucker, and Shandela, and I'm here tonight representing the interest of Janine Richards, who is the owner. Before I forget, begin, Janine Richards is not in attendance tonight. However, her husband, David, is with me, and he is here to answer any questions which the board may have. And just for the record, I do have a letter of authorization to indicate-
Thank you, Ms. Summers.
That David can speak on behalf of his wife, a fact that I applaud. So, also, another housekeeping matter before I begin, with the, the relief that we are seeking tonight is to be able to- The relief that we are seeking tonight is to be able to authorize the single-family property, which is currently at 14 Hobart Avenue, to be converted into four residential units. In recent discussions with Mr. Richards, he's not entirely sure whether he wants to go all the way up to four, so I would like to amend the request for relief to allow us to convert up to four units. And I don't think that that should be a problem.
We can make that change?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, with that, as I said before, Dave Richards is here with me. I think what I'd like to do before I get into a discussion about the actual special exception criteria is to go through some of the submittal materials that we provided to you.
Okay.
I did have an opportunity to drive by the property myself, and we provided you with a copy of the tax card, and that includes a photo which shows from the street itself what the property looks like on the, and I don't know if that's probably in your materials, but to the left of the house, where there's a car parked in front of it, that is the garage, and that's noted on your plan that's up on the screen right now. In addition to that, we have provided to you a copy of the tax map, and on the tax map, there are several notations of little stars, little asterisks, and in each of these asterisks are noted the lots within the general vicinity, which have multiple units in them. Most of them are two units, but there's one of the properties that has five units. And we offer this just as to understand that there is some evidence that other multi-unit properties are in the vicinity. And then last, before I discuss the actual proposal itself, we provided to you two different plans, one of which is an existing conditions plan, and then one of which is labeled, in the title block, it's labeled site plan. So, on this, you can see on the existing conditions, essentially, we have a single-family house, a barn, a garage, and then there's a shed over to the side. If you look next at what's labeled as the site plan, that depicts what our proposal consists of, and what you can see here is that we have an existing driveway. We have the single-family house, which is the structure closest to Hobart Street, and within that single-family house, we are proposing to have possibly two units, but possibly one. That's the one we haven't made up our mind on. And we also would propose to have a garage attached to that structure of up to 400 square feet, which is allowed by right. If we had only one unit, then we would likely only have one of the garages attached to that single-family. If we had the two, then we would have a garage on either side to service each of the units. The existing garage is what is labeled Proposed Unit Number Four. That will be one of the lots, or one of the structures to be converted. And then the other area of activity is over near what's marked Proposed Unit Number One. That will also have a 400-square-foot garage attached to it, and that will be, that currently is an existing barn, and that will be converted into a residence as well. And servicing, or providing access to that garage, excuse me, to that Proposed Unit Number One, will be a new driveway that will go back to the garage, so that, in short, we are having driveways which will service all of the lots, whether they be three units or four units. And then, basically, all of the proposed units, other than the garage unit, will have their own separate garage. And so that means that there will be adequate parking. So with that, and then also, as you can see from this plan, we do conform to all of the setbacks, with the exception of the existing garage, and that is a non-conforming structure. But other than that, as you can see, all the setbacks and so forth, the impervious surface and that kind of thing, that's all inconformance. So with that, turning to the special exception criteria, as I've said before, there really is not going to be any change to the site itself, other than the creation of an extra driveway going into the property to service Proposed Unit Number One, and there will be the creation of garage spaces for Proposed Unit Number One, and then up to two garage spaces, depending upon how many units that we decide to put in the single-family house. But beyond that, there's going to be no physical changes to the site. The number of units, as I said, one is going to be in the barn, one is going to be in the existing garage, and then up to two in the existing single-family dwelling. As I've mentioned, the tax map demonstrates that, spare with me a moment, I've lost my place, demonstrates that there are other properties in the neighborhood which already have this type of multifamily operation in place. The proposed units will be condominium units, and they will be owner-occupied. As I've said, the garages are going to be added to the existing residential structure, and they meet the requirements of Schedule One, Notice G. With regard to the special exception criteria in Article Five, Section 5.2, the use is a permitted special exception under Article Four, Section 4.2, Section I. The use itself is, it will be operated so as to protect the public health and safety and welfare, because there is adequate off-street parking available through the garages and the driveways that'll service these units. The property is going to be serviced by Municipal Water and Sewer. As I said, the proposed use of standalone residential units is going to be compatible with the Zone District and the post-development 1972 property.
May I just stop you for a moment?
Sure.
You said it will be serviced? Does that mean it's not currently serviced by Water and Sewer?
It is currently.
It is currently. Great, thank you.
I probably wrote this some time ago. The adequate landscaping and screening will be provided. Just to bring your attention to the site plan, there will be a fence that's going to be installed as between the, what is the existing garage and what's going to be Proposed Unit Number Four and 12 Hobart Street. And then on the other side of the property, which is next to 20 Hobart Street, there is currently, you can see on the map there, there's a stone wall which comes off of the corner of Hobart Street extending into the property. That wall, possibly together with some landscaping, will be installed over on that side of the property to act as some screening between the barn unit and the adjacent property on 20 Hobart Street. Actually, that's not right, that's...
16-18.
16-18.
Yep.
The maps only shows 20. Oh, I see. It's kind of tucked up above, my apologies.
Sorry, so can you just, the fence is going to be on the...
So if you look, let me just see if I can go up here.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I got it right.
Can we, oh, that is right, okay. So this is the existing garage. That's going to become Unit Number Four. As you can see, it's right up quite close to the boundary line here, so there will be a fence installed so that it blocks, it screens this unit from this property. And then, as I said, up above, you can see that the property up on the northerly side of the property is 16 to 18 Hobart Street. Currently, between the Proposed Unit Number One, which is the barn, and that you can't even really see that, the barn all that well from the street, it's kind of tucked behind the house, but there is a stone wall that comes off of the street, and our plan would be to either extend that stone wall or perhaps add some greenery so that the proposed barn unit is shielded from those houses to the north.
Okay.
We are aware that, oh, sorry.
It's not for in here, it's strictly for the video recorded. They'll come out and tell us if there's an issue. Yep.
We are aware of the fact that the planning board is going to need to approve the site plan, because this is a project that has more than three structures. And then finally, you...
You did.
Generally not allowed to touch any machinery. And then finally, the use will not adversely affect abutting property or nearby property values, because the proposed use will remain residential, and all of the abutting properties in the area are either single-family or residences containing between two and five units. And so with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions which you may have, but I think it's a fairly straightforward application.
Are there any questions for the applicant? Ms. Davies?
I'm thinking, so the only new structures are the two to three proposed garage units.
That's correct.
And they're going to be single-story, you know, it's not going to be like a, they're not going to be exceptionally tall structures, is that...
I'm going to turn to ask my client to address that. I don't believe that they will be, but again, I'm going to defer to him on that.
Dave Richards?
We're planning to adhere to the rules that say that can't be any bigger than 400 square feet. We haven't designed it yet. That'll be the next step after this board, before we get in front of the planning board.
I just wondered, in terms of visual impact and sort of density, how tall they might be, they're just going to be...
I'm envisioning your standard garage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My only question, I assume that the footprint of the existing buildings is not going to change?
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, Ms. Summers. I'll open it up to the public, you'll have an opportunity to comment should there be anything. Any members of the public like to comment pro or con this application, please step up to the mic, and as you may have heard earlier, let us know who you are.
Absolutely. Hi, my name is Ashley Klimarzick, and I am the resident at 20 Hobart Street. My property is at the very dead end. Currently, that end of the road, we have a right-of-way to our neighbors at 16 and 18, so their driveway is a right-of-way onto our property to get out. And so my main concern is parking. This was semi-proposed years ago, and the concern back then was impact on the neighborhood. It's quite the narrow dead-end street. It actually tapers off quite a bit as you come down to the road. Currently, at 16 and 18, the condo unit there, four cars reside. And yes, it is true that there are several multifamily locations on Hobart. The problem is that it's traffic. It's a lot of traffic down there on a dead-end road. There's a lot of turning around and maneuvering. There's a lot of large trucks that back in. Mailboxes have been hit, people off the road, plow trucks off the road. So I guess my point is, it's very, very narrow. I have a question on how the infrastructure of the road will be upgraded to essentially repair the older road that is dilapidating already, including the sewer pipes that are collapsing and the water that is spilling into the road that creates an ice slick and damage underneath the hot top. And the non-existing driveway, I'm wondering if that cuts into any of 20 Hobart Street's property. He mentioned moving a rock wall between the properties. My property lines are 10 feet into 16-18's property.
I'm sorry, I don't understand that statement.
May I show?
Please, take the microphone with you, though.
Oh, of course. Okay.
It is confusing, the numbering of the houses there.
It is. And so we are, okay, there's Dave's property, right, so Hobart Street, I'm down here, I'm at 20, so our driveway...
Is 20 the first house on the left, or is 20 the little one that sits ahead of you?
Let me back up.
The blue house on the left?
The little one.
It's at the very end of the street.
It's at the very end. This is...
It's not pictured.
It's not pictured?
Yeah, that's 16-18.
It's a 16-18? Okay, so we're not pictured. So there's Hobart, and our house is like at the top here.
Right.
So this is our property line, this is the driveway that starts.
Oh, okay.
I guess, right?
So essentially, the town road ends at where that stone wall is.
Correct, correct.
Got it.
Okay, and so here's the stone wall, and from the street, here's our mailbox area, and that's 10 feet in. So that's basically, that dotted line, is our property. And so we share space. I don't know what I've done. Did I do that?
I don't think it's your fault.
Okay.
I don't think you did that.
So my question is, how is the rock wall going to be moved? It seems a little bit, the land kind of seems interesting, and the fact that 20 isn't shown to kind of give perspective as the scale of the road, the tightness, things like that, that's also concerning for me.
I think we're getting back there, but you were done with it anyway, Ms. Klimarzick.
I was, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Would anyone else like to speak, pro or con?
Thank you. My name's Cassandra Shawver, S-H-A-W-V-E-S-V-I-C-T-E-R-E-R. I am at the 16-18 Hobart Street, it's a duplex, so I'm in a butter.
So yours is the blue house?
The yellow house at the top there, so the one that's directly abutting the applicant property.
Got it.
So I don't really have any questions that are zoning-related at this time, but I did just want to echo Ashley's sentiments about concerns regarding traffic and parking, just because that spot where his driveway comes out, it is kind of a choke point where the road onto McKinley kind of meets Hobart, so it's very much a tight area right there, as was previously stated. So once, like, I do note that there are garages there that are proposed, but my thoughts are, once there are visitors and that sort of thing, where will that wash out into? I don't know if there is room. So my concern is that they will get pushed into essentially our area, which it is very tight. We are like, it's not a lot of space for us to park ourselves, so it's, I just kind of wanted to echo that concern on that. I mean, obviously, going forward, most of my questions are plenty more related, but I just wanted to emphasize here, yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Would anyone else like to make a comment? Ms. Summers?
Thank you. I think one thing that might be helpful to the board in terms of trying to, that is a little confusing, I see what they're saying. If you take a look at the tax map, that might be a little bit more helpful.
Actually, I had a question about the lot lines on the north side, which I haven't noticed.
On the plan?
On the tax map.
The tax map looks different than the...
The lot line was just changed.
Right, there was a lot line adjustment done a few months ago, and the tax map may not, it's possible the tax map has not caught up with it. However, the plan that you have does reflect the lot line adjustment. And what happened with that lot line adjustment, just so you're aware, is that the effect of the lot line adjustment made our lot, the 14 lot, larger in order to... of the lot line adjustment made our lot, the 14 lot, larger, in order to meet the dimensional requirements.
Great.
So, just to, what I started to say was that I think, just in terms of getting some, your bearings as to where 20 is, as opposed to 16-18, if you look at the tax map, and putting aside for the moment the difference in the actual, you know, the size of 14, 16-18 is immediately to the north, and then what happens is that 20 is pretty much at the end of Hobart Street, and is to the north of 16-18. So I think that's where some of the confusion may lie. In response to some of the comments, you know, what I would say is that we have designed this in such a way, in terms of parking, that each of the proposed units, other than the garage, which is gonna be a one-bedroom, and the calculations are done in the special exception discussion, there's a total required parking for nine spaces, assuming that there's going to be four units. This calculation is based upon three to four bedrooms in Unit 1, Unit 1 is gonna be the barn unit, three bedrooms each in Units 2 and 3, and that number may decrease possibly if we only have one unit in that main house, and then two bedrooms in Unit 4. So even if we have the full four units that we contemplate, there is a requirement for nine spaces, all in all, and we believe that, two, three, four, five, six, the garages themselves will be able to house six of those cars, and our remaining three cars, if need be, can be parked in the driveway. So we do believe that there is adequate space on the property itself, that can house the garages, or can house the cars for the residents here. With regard to the concerns about traffic, as one of the speakers said, that is going to be a planning board issue. It is a little bit tight down there, there's no question about that, but all those issues are gonna have to be vetted before the planning board. And then with regard to the stone wall, I think maybe where some of the confusion lies is that if you look at the, that site plan for where the stone wall is, that is, that's clearly on the subject property, the 14 Hobart. And so if that were to be, it's not gonna be moved per se, but the length of it might be extended, and then what we were saying before too, is that there might be some additional greenery that would be installed, say, in the area of the shed.
Okay. Are there any further questions for the applicant? Hearing none, I'm gonna close the public session, we're gonna move into deliberation. We have before us a request for up to four units in existing structures, that meets all of the other requirements as far as setbacks are concerned. There's no request for parking. Does anybody have any comments, or questions, or ideas? It's a very quiet group this evening.
I guess, are the condition, the current condition of the garage and barn, I might have a question for them, I just realized this, are they in the condition that they can be rehabbed?
That's up to them.
Okay.
The issue for us is that they're not gonna change the footprint of the building-
Okay, so they've tear down, same footprint, okay.
If they have to be torn down and started over again, that's up to the applicant.
Question answered.
And the code enforcement office, who will have to say it's up to me.
I'll make that decision.
Oh, Doug, okay, we're good.
It's all up to Doug.
Bye, David.
Doug, is there, since we're talking to Doug-
Yes.
Is there a need for a driveway permit for the second driveway, or is that part of the site plan review process?
I believe there is a drive, existing driveway there now.
Then, on the north side? It doesn't show it on the site plan?
I think there is one there, then. There's gravel. There's a gravel.
May I speak to that?
Actually, no, 'cause we've closed public session.
Okay.
If there's an issue that requires it, we can reopen it, but-
We can require him to get a driveway permit, although I think that's private.
No, the driveway would come out, according to this, is-
It's just out in the public.
It's just into the public section of Hobart Street, as opposed to the private driveway.
So we could require him to get a driveway permit.
And that's issued by the town?
Yes.
Okay. And there's no problem with more than two drives within a certain period, or distance of frontage?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
If there is, then we'll deal with it.
Right.
Thank you.
Does anybody wanna go through the special exception criteria quickly? Just to make sure we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
Would you like me to do that?
That would be lovely, Ms. Davies, thank you.
I can tell you were hinting.
I was hinting for somebody to do, hinting for someone to do it.
All right. So, special exception criteria, that the use is a permitted special exception as set forth in Article 4.2, Schedule I thereof, I believe that it is.
It is.
So we're good there. That the use is so designed, located, and proposed to be operated, that the public health, safety, welfare, and convenience will be protected. I believe we've heard some mild concerns from like, the two nearby property owners, but more to do with, I think, the public right-of-way than necessarily this proposal. I don't see this proposal as presenting any significant concerns. I know that it's a dead-end street, but I think that it's acceptable, it's been designed so as to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. And there's not really a great change in the physical aspects of the property, other than the addition of the three garages.
Mm-hmm.
Item 3, that the proposed use will be compatible with the zone district in adjoining post-1972 development, where it was to be located, and I believe that between the fact that there's no new structures other than the garages, and the fact that there's been evidence provided on the tax map that there's multiple properties nearby, that have more than one unit, I think that's a reasonable, that this criteria has been met. That adequate landscaping and screening are provided, as required herein, I would suggest that we condition the approval on the assertions made by the applicant regarding the screening, which isn't necessarily noted on the site plan, but I would like it to be included. That adequate off-street parking and loading is provided, and ingress and egress so designed as to cause minimum interference with traffic on abutting streets, I'm satisfied that those items have been attended to, there's gonna be adequate off-street parking provided between the garages and the driveway parking. Item F, that the use conforms with all applicable regulations governing the district where located, except as otherwise be determined for large-scale developments, so I think that we are not dealing with a large-scale development, and I think we're all set with this, that it does conform, they're not requiring any additional relief. G, as a condition of special exception approval, the applicant may be required to obtain planning, town plan a review, and/or planning board approval of the site plan. In this case, they are planning to go to the, they are intending to go to the planning board, so that condition has been met.
Although we should make that a condition of any motion.
Okay, good point. Item H, that the use shall not adversely affect abutting or nearby property values, there will be an increase in the number of units, but not in the physical aspect of the property, other than the garage, addition of garages, and I think the property is well within its lot coverage and other requirements, so I think that's satisfied.
Your honor, roll.
Thank you. Item I, that if the application for special exception, well, that does apply.
We don't need, I-N-J.
Okay, I-N-J, or do not apply. So, any discussion on whether or not the application meets these criteria, other than what I've outlined?
I have some question about owner occupied, and putting it in the condo documents, is that something that gets reviewed by the planning board, to make sure that that actually happens?
If they're condos, that doesn't apply. The homeowner occupation part of it?
No, it's, no, it said in the document that condos would be owner occupied, meaning somebody can't buy the condo and then rent it out.
That's part of the condominium documents, right?
Yeah.
Does that get reviewed by the planning board? So in short, that that happens?
It would come to us, and then get recorded at the registry, or something like that, to that effect.
Okay, so that's a requirement.
It's through the planning office, it's through the planning office.
Okay.
Yep. Yes, that will get recorded.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when we make a motion, for example, it would say, as requested, or as applied, and so the fact that that was part of the application would then become part of the, any acceptance that would be?
Got it. New B, sorry, just-
No, 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 that's good stuff, good stuff. Do you wanna continue with the motion, Laura?
I'm trying to remember what the thing you just reminded me that we should include in.
Approval.
Okay, okay. So, I move that we accept the application, I don't have any, thank you, this was important. The application of Janine L. Richards for special exception per Article 4, Section 4.2, Schedule I, permitted uses in Article 5, Section 5.2, to permit conversion- Excuse me. Of the existing single-family home and accessory structures at 14 Hobart Street into up to four units of residential condominiums, as presented with the commitment of the applicant to provide screening on both the north and the south property lines, and with a condition that the site plan be reviewed by the planning board. This is for ZBA Case 23-4.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
So we don't have to, we don't have to say, require that the units be owner occupied?
I think it is useful to repeat that as a condition of acceptance, I personally like having that be stated.
Because it was presented.
It is presented in the application as such.
I think we should say that.
I think it is useful, do you wanna propose an amendment to the motion? Ms. Murzki?
Sure, I move that we amend the motion to include that the application is being voted on, based on the presentation by the applicant, that the applicant intends to convey the units as condominium units, and to prevent all from becoming rental units, and the condominium documents will require that the units be owner occupied.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion of the amendment? Hearing none, we'll vote on the amendment, we'll work our way back out. Vote on the amendment, all those in favor of Mr. Murzki's amendment, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Is there any discussion of the amended motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amended motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes aye. You're all set, 5-0. Thank you very much. Does anybody need a break? It's 9 o'clock, it's been two hours. Is anybody all set there? I would like to ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. I'm gonna ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. Ms. Summers, thank you.
I'll race you to the restroom.
No, you go.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody need a break? It's 9 o'clock, it's been two hours. Is anybody all set there? I would like to ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. I'm gonna ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. Ms. Summers, thank you.
I'll race you to the restroom.
No, you go.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody need a break? It's 9 o'clock, it's been two hours. Is anybody all set there? I would like to ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. I'm gonna ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. Ms. Summers, thank you.
I'll race you to the restroom.
No, you go.
You sure?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody need a break? It's 9 o'clock, it's been two hours. Is anybody all set there? I would like to ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. I'm gonna ask for five minutes, if you don't mind. Ms. Summers, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. 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 Get back into session, then, for the last application, the application of Samuel Leitner for a variance from Article 4, Section 4.3, Schedule II, II, two, Schedule II, density and dimensional regulations residential to permit the proposed construction of a 200-square-foot addition to the existing structure at 25 Clover Street with less than the required minimum front yard setback. Subject property is located in the R3 Single Family Residential Zoning District, Tax Map Parcel 64-66. This is ZBA Case 23-5. Ms. Summers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I am here tonight with Sam and Colleen Leitner. They are the owners of this property. And what we are here tonight to do is to seek permission to be able to install or create a proposed addition to the front side of their existing home. And the setback would be 12.8, at least that's what this is shown on the plan, to the roof corner from the street, as opposed to the 25-foot setback that is required. So, what we have presented to you tonight is a variance plan, which shows on it the building setback. It shows the existing structure, which is within, largely but not entirely, within the building setback. And then it shows the location of the proposed addition. And as you can see on the building setback, a portion of the proposed addition actually lies within the building setback, and there's no encroachment. And then there's a portion that encroaches within the setback. What we have done is that we've put a kind of a tie line, if you will, on one corner of the proposed addition, which shows that the corner of the building is 13.9 to the street, and to the roof corner is 12.8. So, that provides you with some sense as to where things are in space. The second thing that we have provided to you is a depiction of the, what the property, what the structure will look like once the addition comes on. That's noted as Exhibit 2 in your materials. And that includes both a computer-generated depiction, as well as the layout of the building. As you can see, the, both on the variance plan and then the floor plan itself, the proposed addition is roughly 14 by 14, extending into the front yard. And it's a two-story structure. The next thing that we have provided to you is the tax map, which shows this particular lot in conjunction with the other lots in the neighborhood. And then, finally, what we did is that we provided you with Exhibit 4, which depicts a fence along the boundary of the property. But also, I think in the, it shows you the trees that are in the property itself, including a very large maple tree that's to the right of the existing structure. So, with that, I'd like to address the variance criteria that we believe supports our request to have an encroachment into the front yard setback.
May I interrupt?
Sure.
Myself and another member stopped by over the weekend. Mr. Leitner was kind enough to come out, inquire as to what people were doing hanging around his property, and explain to us that there's a big difference between the property line and the street. And I was wondering if one of you would make that clear for the members of the board, because I'm not sure that the site plan makes that completely clear.
All right. What you said, 12.8, or, sorry.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask that, if you speak, you need to use that, because it's being recorded. It's not for our hearing, it's for...
I'm unaware of any discussion.
No, it's, it's in your favor.
No, I, I understand. I guess all I would say is, is that I would, and obviously I'll let Sam pipe in here, too, but I would rely on Henry's survey work, which depicts 12.8 from the roof corner to the street.
To the, to the property line.
To the property line.
Property line does not equal the street. Mr. Leitner, would you?
Correct. I see, I see.
Okay.
I see. And so, that there's a, there's a much greater
Yes.
...distance between the property line and the street.
That's correct. There's a significance difference there.
Very often, the edge of pavement is
The same.
Not the same as the, as the edge of the right of way.
Yes.
So, that area between the edge of pavement and the property line is part of the town's property, which owns the street. But it does provide the appearance of more space.
Right, right.
It's pretty significant.
It was a significant difference. I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't think you were aware of that. I got the sense you weren't, perhaps, from the application. So, I just wanted to make sure that, for the board to understand visually, there's a significant difference between edge of pavement and property line, of six or eight feet?
Yeah, I don't think probably more than that, but...
At least.
I would say so.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I just simply wanted to make that clear.
Just kind of eyeballing it here, it almost looks like it's roughly the same distance as that from the corner of the new building to the property line.
Agreed.
Another 12 feet, perhaps.
Agreed. That was our observation. I just wanted to make sure that was entered into the record.
All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate you bringing that to my attention. I was just so focused on the
Yep.
On the property line and the tax map.
Thanks for allowing me to interrupt.
So, with that, I'll now address the variance criteria. And the first one, of course, is whether or not the variance is going to be contrary to the public interest. And the, as we know, the variance has to unduly and to a marked degree violate the relevant ordinance's basic zoning objectives. The front yard setback zoning objective would be to avoid overcrowding or safety issues in the residential neighborhood by virtue of the encroachment. We don't believe that the proposal here is going to alter the essential locality of the, or threaten the public health, safety, or welfare. I do believe it's going to be consistent with the overall neighborhood, the size of the lots, and the configurations of the structures on the lots. And also, I don't believe that there's any issues in terms of safety. I did have Sam go out and put a stake in the area in showing the distance where the... Could I have that? I'll just give you that today. For the, for the board members that did go out to see this, I, you may recall that there was a, like a raised bed in the front yard. That was roughly where the proposed addition is going to go to. But I think that that picture of Sam standing in the front yard also gives you a sense as to how far out from the existing building that the addition will encroach into. And I think you can, can, will find that there's no issues that derive from that in terms of line of sight or anything coming out of Fairway Drive. So, the, the next criteria, of course, is the spirit of the ordinance is observed. And again, this, this is consistent with, it's the same result as the public interest criteria. And essentially, the position that we're taking is that this rather modest addition on this lot is not going to further a sense of overcrowding or congestion, and therefore the spirit of the intent of the ordinance is still observed. The third criteria is whether or not substantial justice is going to be done. And that, of course, is a balancing test, weighing the benefits and losses to the applicant and the public, and whether the loss to the applicant of denying the variance is going to be outweighed by any gain to the individual or to the public. In this case, we don't believe, we believe that there would be a significant loss to the applicant if they cannot proceed, because this fairly modest addition is going to allow them to gain probably needed living space inside those quarters, which I understand contains at least one young child, perhaps more. And so, probably any additional space they can get would be greatly appreciated. And then, in terms of the public or members of the public, we don't believe that there's going to be any gain to the public in denying this, on the general public or any individuals. And certainly, even if there was any kind of loss, that is going to be outweighed to the damage done to the Leitners if they don't get this. The fourth criteria is whether or not the values of the surrounding properties are diminished. We don't believe that that's going to be an issue. This is going to remain a residential use. And the size of the proposed addition, as configured on this lot, is going to be compatible with the other residential structures in the area, so that it's not going to stick out and cause the property values to be impacted. The last criteria is the criteria of hardship. And as we know, there are several components to this. The first criteria being whether or not there are special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, and thus cause unnecessary hardship if the variance is denied. The special conditions associated with this property are that, as has been noted, the property line is situated in a fashion that it's irregular. The southerly property line kind of goes off at an angle next to Clover Street. And as a result of that, what it does is that it creates kind of this diminished pocket of potential area in the front of the house in which, in which to develop. Another aspect of the uniqueness of this property is that it's a corner lot. And then, the third element of it, which I believe is special, is that there's a very large maple tree, which is also, is also depicted on Exhibit Number 2. It's, it's really quite lovely out there, and I think that the applicant would certainly like to keep that. And even though potentially there could be room to put the proposed addition on the easterly side of the existing house, that would really jeopardize the health and viability of that maple tree, if not cause it to be cut down completely. And we just believe that that would be a harm to the applicant. And I think probably that tree provides a lot of pleasure to other neighboring properties out there. So, those three things, we believe, taken together, do constitute special conditions. And again, on the west side, where there is some space within the building setback, that's a children's play area. And also, the layout of the existing structure consists of, on the west side of the existing structure, a garage. And so, it doesn't really make sense functionally to have an addition over on the other side of the garage. It really makes sense to have it where we propose to have it, which is in the front of the building. So, the next element of the hardship test is whether or not there's a fair and substantial relationship between the public purpose of the ordinance and the specific application of that provision to the property here. So, this is a densely populated neighborhood. It has relatively small lots. The addition is going to be consistent with the size of the lots, the size of the structures on those lots. And the proposed addition, where we are requesting to have it done, is not really going to unnecessarily call attention to itself. We do believe it's going to blend in, and it's not going to create a sense of overcrowding in that front yard. And therefore, there's no relationship between the purpose of the ordinance and the application as applied here. And then, the last piece of the hardship test is the fact that it's reasonable. And again, as I've said, this is, given the overall size of the existing dwelling, given the proposed addition that we're talking about, which is really pretty modest by all accounts, the fact that it actually lies, a portion of it, within the building setback itself, and that there are varying degrees of encroachment, means that this is reasonable, and that all things taken into account, this is probably the best, best location for it. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you, if you have any. Sam is here to answer anything. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Summers. Any questions for the applicant? Members of the board?
Yep.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any members of the public wish to comment, pro or con? Hearing none.
I just have a concern.
You just got in under the wire.
My name is Anne Marie Fajella. I live on Bittersweet Lane, behind Sam and his lovely wife. And my only concern is, is that it's a neighborhood with ranches. And if he's going out and up the corner lot that he lives on, there's not a lot of clearance where the people come flying around that corner, as it is, and don't stop. So, the view in the front, if he's coming out further in the front, or however he's going up and out, is that going to propose a problem with the people that come flying around that corner? Because he, there's a stop sign on his, at the end of that.
So, there's a stop sign?
Right on the corner of Sam's property, on Fairway.
So, traffic coming down on Fairway toward Clover
Coming down this...
Have to stop?
Yes. They have to stop, but nobody else has to stop. So, when the people are coming from the back road of the Exeter Library, coming around that corner, that street heading towards Sam's house, as they barrel around that corner, you can barely see them now, because they come on Sam's side of the street. There's no stop sign, there's nothing there. So, if you're not out far enough to see if someone's coming right, if you go to go left, it isn't going to be pretty.
But there is a stop sign there.
There is a stop sign on the corner of his property.
Okay. So, that would be...
So, if you're, if you're, if you're on Fairway Drive, and you want to go left or right onto Clover.
You have to stop.
You have to stop.
And that would be the sideline that would be impacted most.
Nobody else has
Right.
A stop sign.
But that's the sideline that would be impacted.
Because where his, yeah, his beautiful home is right there on the corner, and he's got this beautiful tree there with a stop sign.
Okay.
And when those people come around that corner, nobody else has a stop sign but right there on that corner where his, where his, his property is.
Thank you.
30 inches.
Okay. Thank you for making note of that.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment?
I will.
Ms. Summers?
Well, as I said, we had done some rough estimates to try to address the line of sight question. And I don't believe that there is one, based upon the photographs that we've submitted to date. However, Doug Eastman just brought to my attention again, Section 5.3.2, which is a corner lot visual clearance. And it says at all street intersections, no obstruction to vision exceeding 30 inches in height, obviously this will be exceeding that, above the established grade of the street at the property line, shall be erected on any lot within the triangle formed by the street lot lines of such lot, and a line drawn between the points along such lot lines, 30 feet distance from their point of intersection. I, I'm not entirely sure where that 30 feet would be.
So, in other words, you measure back from the corner 30 feet in each side?
That's how I read this, yes.
And then you draw a line
A triangle.
Between those two points.
Yeah.
So, it's the
Oh, wait a minute.
Fairway Drive, frontage is 66 feet.
Hold on, just a second. I, I think I may have
Ms. Summers.
On, on the plan here, this may have something. Edge of triangular piece, oh, I think that's just Henry's.
So, you'd do something like that.
Go up this way 30.
And you'd have to be 30 feet back in.
And then from here
And that's 113, so it'd be a third of that.
Sure.
By my estimation, the stockade fence might conflict, but not the addition.
Agreed.
Correct.
I completely agree.
Okay.
I just want, wanted to make sure.
No, that's great.
So, everybody understands what we're doing here.
It's eyeballing it, but if you go to the corner of your lot line, go 30 feet in each, each direction along your lot line, and then connect those two points.
Yep.
I'm eyeballing it, but I agree, the stockade fence intrudes in that.
Yeah.
But not the addition.
But not the addition.
Okay.
Because the addition's coming straight out from the building.
30 feet this way.
Draw a line.
I think we're good.
I think you're good, too.
I just want
No, no, no.
Thank you.
This is the first time I've ever heard this one. It may be the first corner lot we've ever dealt with here.
Heard it more than I need to.
The two-story nature of the addition wouldn't affect, I mean
No.
It's 30 feet off the ground, 30 inches off the ground, not, it doesn't matter whether it's two...
That's, that's correct. I mean, the minimum is the 30 inches above the ground. That's what triggers the operation of that particular ordinance, right?
So, I think we're okay with that.
You'll have to discuss your stockade fence with the code enforcement officer.
Correct.
It's existing.
I think it's good, because there is, because the road...
The road's past the property line, there's plenty of line of sight.
But because there is such, the property line is set back so far on there, and there's so much lawn space where the stop bar is for the stop sign, which is further down, pretty close, that I, I think there's enough space there that I would measure from the pavement.
Right, right, as opposed to the property line.
It makes common sense.
And as we know, the property line and the pavement are two very different things in that area.
Yep.
that area.
Yep.
Okay. So, you're all set? Okay. We're going to close the public session, move into deliberations at this point. Any comments, any questions, any discussion from members of the board?
Yeah.
As far as the application's concerned?
I do think that it will be closer to the street than is typical in the neighborhood, but I also recognize that if you had to stay within the setbacks, this line here shows us that there's not much you could do, so that, to me, overcomes, it presents a true hardship, and it overcomes any.
If we were on the other side of J.D. Hill's circle, I'm sorry, I'm using the old names. If we were where the buildings are uniformly set back, I think there might be a different issue with having one sticking out, but where it's located, especially given that the properties nearby are about the same distance, I don't see an issue with that at all, where it is. Given the lack of discussion, I don't think it's necessary to go through the variance criteria here, unless somebody has a particular issue they would like to raise. If not, I would accept a motion at this time.
Well, let's just go through it real quick. There's only five, and you probably should. Variance will not be contrary to the public interest. I think we've discussed any safety concerns and the purpose of the ordinance and all that. Spirit of the ordinance is observed. Again, discussed the purpose of the ordinance and the setback, and that the circumstances of the lot, that we believe that the spirit of the ordinance would be observed.
Agreed.
Substantial justice is done, that I don't think that this would, the benefit to the public would be outweighed by, or the harm to the applicant. Yes, that, that the harm to the applicant would be more, would be greater than any benefit to the public, or the converse of that, I suppose. Certainly wouldn't affect surrounding property values. It would be an enhancement.
Well, I have something to say about that. I don't think anything in the neighborhood looks like that computer-generated picture.
You don't think that?
I don't think that, I think that what was brought up about, it's going to be different for people to go around that corner, they're going to be surprised by that, and the rules that you were just discussing, it's not clear to me what those mean. I mean, I'd like to have a clearer explanation of what you were trying to say. I know that the lot line is not the street, but we have a neighbor saying, "This is going to confuse people driving in that neighborhood," and I think that's reasonable evidence, and that gives me pause.
Do you want to discuss the sight distance concern? It was?
I think the intent is that people going on Clover Street, either from, if we look at this chart here, from the lower-left around to the right, or from the right around to the lower-left, do not have to stop. Their sight lines will not be impeded in any way by this addition. The people that are coming from Fairway Drive, which is at the top of the image before us, and coming onto Clover, whether they're turning left or right, do have a stop sign, and that stop sign is located beyond that corner of the property line, is significantly beyond the corner of the property line. Following that property line, that parallels Fairway down for another, let's say, 10 to 12 feet, before the stop sign actually occurs, where the end of pavement occurs, that those people will have plenty of sight, either to the left or to the right on Clover. Cars on Clover Street, I'm assuming are restricted to 25 to 30 miles per hour, whether they adhere to that or not. I mean, my street's limited to 25, but you'd never know it. But there's no, I don't see this addition as impeding the sight lines for traffic moving in either direction on Clover, and there is a stop sign on Fairway that is well beyond the addition.
Well, I think there's traffic that goes through there that comes from outside the neighborhood, and people that aren't comfortable and are used to that.
But whether they're local or visitors, they're still on Clover or on Fairway.
Right, but I'm just saying that you're changing something about the way the eye is going to take that in, and I think that does affect safety.
Okay.
Okay. Fairly noted.
So that would be relative to Criteria One, that would be contrary to the public interest. Substantial justice is done, I think we covered that. The values of surrounding properties are not diminished, so your concern wasn't relative to that, was it?
Well, it does, it is going to diminish the value of surrounding properties, because they're all ranches, and they don't look like that.
So this is separate than the sight line distance, okay?
Yeah, this is going to let this particular property have an advantage, that it's getting the benefit of having this designed based on purportedly addressing something irregular, but actually, it's creating something irregular in the neighborhood.
Is it the fact that it's jutting out, or the fact that it has a second story?
Both.
Because there is a house down on Fairway at the corner, Fairway and, I think, Bittersweet. That's two-story as well, on a corner.
Lot 65-64 is two-corner, and I believe the new units that are located on our Exhibit Three, Lot 65-102, I believe those are all two stories. That's that new development that's kind of?
It's also jutting out, so that's what I'm talking about, interesting, so.
So you think that having the different architectural style would have a negative impact on the surrounding properties? I think it would have a positive impact, myself.
I think you're saying they have an advantage over the other ones, because it looks bigger and different than the ranches surrounding them.
Okay.
But that's not going to diminish the property values of the surrounding properties, it's going to enhance the property value of the applicant property.
No, I don't think, six of one and half dozen of the other, really. But also, I think the safety issue is true, because people do traverse through that neighborhood from outside, and they don't necessarily, aren't necessarily used to what's in that neighborhood. Their eye's going to track what's there.
Okay. And then, the final criteria is literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in unnecessary hardship, and I think that if you look at the setbacks that are created, or shown on the site plan, literal enforcement would almost make the lot unbuildable, and so, I think the lot size and shape relative to the zoning setbacks is a hardship right there. What's that?
I'm sorry, this is not a time for public comment. We're not supposed to interact. You don't exist. There's a wall here.
You can watch us, but we can't. So, we have disagreement, I believe, on Criteria One and Four.
Correct.
From David, but everybody else is okay? Okay. So, that's the lay of the land as far as the variance criteria, so go for it.
I move that we approve the application for Samuel Leitner for variance from Article Four, Section 4.3, Schedule II, Density and Dimension Regulation Residential to permit the proposed construction of a 200-foot addition to the existing residence at 25 Clover Street with less than required minimum front yard setback. The subject's property is located in the R3 Single Family Residential Zone District, Tax Map Parcel Number 64-66, ZDA Case Number 23-5.
So moved. Is there a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion?
Well, I'm opposing that, for the reasons I've stated.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the application, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? No. Chair votes aye, pass four to one. We're on looking at the application. Thank you very much. Okay, so, the last order of business for this evening is the minutes of the last meeting. However, there were only three members present, Mr. Baum, Ms. Olson-Murphy, and Ms. Davies, because both Martha Pennell and myself had to recuse ourselves for a portion of the business of the January 23 meeting. I don't know that it's a good idea for us to approve the entire minutes, because there would only be two people voting on the minutes for what is a fairly important application. So, I would say that it would be useful at this time for anyone who was here, which is just the three of us in the middle here, to note any changes that might be necessary to the minutes, but not to actually vote on them at this time. That's number one. Number two is that we have received a letter, excuse me, from a Robert Cully, with reference to a measurement that occurs online. Somebody actually read the minutes. 361. However, I want to point out to Mr. Cully and anyone else that might be listening is that this is not the point at which you make this type of change. The minutes are a reflection of what was actually said at the meeting. If there was an inaccuracy in what was said, that inaccuracy needs to be reflected in the minutes. So we cannot make that change that's requested, because the minutes are a literal transcript of what was said at the meeting, and if there was a change, that's something that we brought up in a different context. So, with that said, are there any comments from either of you about the minutes themselves?
Honestly, I didn't get through, so I decided we wait.
I second that.
Fine. We will defer taking action on the January 23 meeting minutes until the next meeting. Motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Seconded.
Second.
I was going to say, not hearing a second, we can't leave.
I think it is.
No, I'm not allowed to second. Moved and seconded. All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Thank you very much. Allow me, now that the meeting is officially over, to introduce Teresa.